Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, item number two, uh, oh, first roll call.
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Present.
Commissioner Zell. Commissioner Waddell.
Here.
Commissioner Salings.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Mayor Pinkerton.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to make an announcement before we start, just to encourage the commissioners. Don't stand too far back if you can't hear, make sure you get close to your microphone, because those that are watching on Zoom can't hear us. So just trying to make sure that, uh, that we do that. Appreciate it. Uh, item number two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on specials, uh, special agenda of September twentieth, twenty twenty. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. Uh, study items three point one, discuss available purchase of downtown property located at four oh one West Broadway Avenue.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, what this item is, is to, uh, talk about a downtown building that is an opportunity for the city to consider whether or not the city would like to purchase the building. Building happens to be the currently existing, uh, Great Plains Bank building at, uh, four oh one West Broadway. And I've got Doug Parker here representing, uh, Great Plains Bank. And also Don Rose, who, uh, took a look at the building and can talk about the structure and, and potential repairs that would be needed. And so I thought that the best way to proceed on this, um, other than telling you individually, we were looking at this, was to, uh, talk about it in study session. Um, so, so no decisions have to be made, but just give you some information. I know originally Mayor that, uh, Doug had reached out to you, I think, uh, some time ago, maybe a couple of months or so ago, about the possibility. And you had passed it on to me. I, I went over there with staff, uh, with Marali, Ken Bradley, looked at the building. Talked to you a little bit more. I think I talked to you, Commissioner Waddell, about the possibilities. And, um, and it kind of just progressed from there. So what we have tonight for you is I'd like to again introduce Doug Parker, have him talk to you from Great Plains Bank and talk about why they're, you know, what they're doing, why this opportunity may be available for us. Uh, and then I'd like to have Don Rose talk about, he did a report. I did email you that report earlier today for you to have a chance. I hope you have a chance, but if not, uh, we'll summarize it for you. And I think Don will do a great job telling you that. So unless you have any questions right now, Doug, would you come up and, and speak to the commission, please?
Pleasure to be here. Uh, little bit of background. Great Plains Bank came to Enid a little bit over two years ago, two years, three months, something of that nature through, uh, merger and acquisition. And, uh, basically we're a branch now of a billion dollar bank. About twenty locations statewide. So locally, uh, we have a presence of about twelve people. And we're housed in a building of thirty thousand square feet. So obviously there's a little bit of, uh, bang around room in there for us. And in looking at options, uh, we really never felt that there was a market, a sales market for that type building that would, that would garner the price, you know, that we would need to make this feasible. Uh, so we looked at the option of some sort of donation. After looking at that and talking with all the accountants, uh, which you've always got to talk to a lot of them. Uh, it became clear that we could, through a donation and some tax advantage, uh, through that donation, possibly be able to, uh, get the building out and allow us then to pick a new location, build a new building that's more appropriate for a staff of twelve to fifteen people. Uh, probably no more than five thousand square feet, you know, something of that nature. So, um, that was where that all came from. Um, I'm trying to think. What we, what the bank would do ultimately through the city, if this was agreed to, is we would set a sales price. That would be the contract amount. The bank would then make a donation back to the city for a certain dollar amount. And, uh, our, our intent would be for that, uh, donation to cover everything but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in effect, the city would be purchasing slash being donated a, a good building, thirty thousand square foot building for a quarter of a billion dollars. And, uh, the bank has done this before in a couple of, uh, small communities. Where, uh, the city actually did this. Uh, one was in Burns Flat, Oklahoma, and the other one was in Grant, Oklahoma. So there is a precedence for it. Uh, I can share some information with Carol on, uh, on the way that was set up. Uh, there is one tenant in the building currently. It's the United Way of Enid Northwest Oklahoma. Their lease is through, uh, June of twenty tw- twenty twenty-two. So a little bit over a year, year and a half, something of that nature. Uh, we would anticipate that it would take probably a good year for us to actually vacate the building anyway. You know, so, uh, you would need to honor that lease with the United Way, but it shouldn't be a long-term deal. That's, I guess, really that in a nutshell. I would, I would also open it up to any questions that I can answer. And then I know that, uh, Gerald wants, uh, Don to speak.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for your generous, uh, offer. The city is always looking at ways to improve things for our, our neighbors and this, uh, and different segments of our community, including youth. Uh, and this opens a door that we were looking to try and find. So I appreciate that and, uh, we'll take a look at that, but it's, it's, uh, very neighborly of you to, uh,
Good for both parties. Uh, you know, we, we can take advantage of the tax advantage and the city can obviously use the space.
Right.
That's what we would want, you know, is the, the city, the community, somebody to use that space appropriately.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You know, I think I was remiss probably to talk about this, just, just to follow up to that, um, this opportunity came to us. As you know, we have not been seeking building space necessarily downtown for the city of Enid. It's just an opportunity. And so with any opportunity, you really probably need to have at least two reasons to, to move on it. And, and one is you need to have some kind of purpose, probably. And two is you need to get a good deal, a good price. I, I think we, and it needs to be a good building. And so I think that, that what's been articulated to me and Doug's has spoken about is it's a good price. Uh, I'd like Don Rose to speak about, um, the condition of the building and give you an idea about what the structure is and answer your questions there. And then I can talk a little bit more about potential uses for the building. I know Commissioner Waddell, you've looked at it and you have some ideas and clearly we would have probably a couple tenants at the beginning. And so anyway, Don, would you come up and fill them in? Thank you, sir.
Commissioners.
Don.
Um, Gerald did ask me to go take a look at the building to give a, my impression of the way it was built and, uh, look for anything that, you know, two years down the road becomes a real issue or a problem. Um, that, uh, maybe is not evident at the time. Uh, so we did spend some time walk through it. Uh, you know, it is the thirty thousand square foot, uh, facility, consists of a basement and two floors. Uh, it's very well built, built in nineteen sixty-five. Um, it's a, uh, concrete structure. It's a poured in place. Columns and, uh, concrete floors. Um, there's very little to know, um, settling or cracking in it. Some exterior cracking and break. It's not unusual, but does not look in any way anything bad. The basement looks in really good shape. No signs of any leaking or any, any problems that's ever gone on there. Um, if I were to start and kind of go through, I can just kind of hit the highlights. Um, the biggest, uh, one of the first things that I will tell you that you would, um, I think would need to invest money in is the roof. The roof is, um, at a point that needs to be replaced. Uh, the type of roof that was put on it is a foam roof. Uh, those inherently have problems. It currently leaks. Uh, once water gets under them, you have mold issues and rotting issues. It's hard to find. But the solution can be, uh, a single membrane can be put over that for a new roof at a, at around an eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollar price. However, um, you would need to see the variance, uh, to put a membrane on this because city's, uh, code requires that you can't have more than three layers of roofs on it, uh, without coring that roof to know how many roof layers are under it. I can't tell you, but if there is more, uh, than one layer, and I would assume there is more, that may require all of the roofs to be pegged off to go back on. So, um, I think it would be fine if you all could get a variance to put one layer on. Otherwise you're looking at a lot more money and exposure to take that roof off and put a new roof on. Um, uh, I'll kind of just quickly go through some of the items that I saw.
Don, could I ask you something before you leave? Did you, did you look at, um, whether structurally the, another layer on that existing roof would be okay structurally? And the variance is there for, for a good reason, as you know.
Right. Right. And really all that we would be putting on from a weight wise would be the addition of a sixty mil, uh, you know, TPO or PVC type of roof. So, um, um, I really don't think the weight would be one that, um,
I don't think that's.
I just, man, that building is, you know, it's, it's, it's the old school heavy concrete. I really, uh, without running any real calculation numbers, you know, I just, I really don't think that, uh, that that additional weight of a, of a, of a single membrane would be enough to cause any real issue. There's a good point. The, uh, restrooms that are in it, depending on what your use, uh, would be, uh, may not, there may not be enough of them. And then what is there? They're small. They don't currently meet, uh, some of the ADA requirements that are out there. Uh, so you would be spending, depending on, you know, what you did with this, with this building, you may have to renovate those, those restrooms, which, uh, while, um, uh, there's only so many square foot in each one, it would, where there may be two stalls, it may just only now become one stall and what you would do to upgrade it. So that would be money that you could end up spending, uh, in the future to upgrade restroom. The, uh, part of the, part of the good thing about it being a, a concrete poured in place beams and, and columns, since you've got large spanned areas. Some most of the walls and everything that are inside are non-load bearing. So depending on how you want to do it, it makes, makes for a good renovation. Uh, your, your ability to get through the floors, if you have a, an elevator. Um, work is recently being done on a hydraulic elevator there. So it seems to be in really good shape. There's a center stairwell that goes down, uh, in the middle, and that's your other way, which can be sometimes somewhat difficult to get. Uh, mechanical equipment or whatever in and out, but, uh, you do have access between that. Another, uh, detriment or liability that is out there is, is, uh, without testing, there's several areas that seem to have obvious asbestos in it. There's, um, uh, in, in most floors, they have a coating. It's kind of like a popcorn cement or popcorn texture that I would assume probably is asbestos related. It's in a non-friable, um, condition right now. Uh, but if ever disturbed, um, you know, you would have to do something with it. It doesn't have to be removed necessarily, but it, it is there. It is a known problem. Um, we've got, uh, tile down in the basement. It's got, it's probably a vinyl asbestos tile in the server room. Uh, that, uh, same thing in its current state, but typically you like removing these things for, uh, any future liability. Um, and then also in the mechanical room in the basement, there's a lot of piping and insulation that is on it. Also is very suspect to be without taking a test. Looks like asbestos related material. And then finally in, um, uh, the upstairs, I noticed a place where the, uh, concrete block had been, um, a hole had been put in it. And there's zone light material that you put for insulation inside a block. And it's leaking out. And that typically has an asbestos, uh, component to it, which is an easy thing to seal up, but just things to know that exist there in the building. The, um, the mechanical units, condensers outside, there's somewhere around fifty-five tons of units that are in really good shape, seemed like that they, uh, um, had been cared for. It's a big money component that seems to be working well and running well. However, as you get inside and get down to the basement, um, you get into the, uh, the blowers and the motors and the, the air handling units that are in there that are, that are old, they're original, they're rusted. Uh, they work and they're working today. Uh, but I've thrown some numbers out about, you know, if that's an expensive endeavor, the day you decide that those need to be replaced, uh, the controls to go along with that probably at some point need to be replaced. And then there's the boiler. It does, the heating component is, looks to be the original boiler. Once again, it works. But it's, it's days numbered. Uh, I would tell you it's not, it's not long for this world. Other than that, as you go through, um, uh, there's things that from the electrical side did not see anything that, I mean, I'm sure that it's, you know, it's old wiring, it's old breakers, it's panels or sub panels in other locations. But nothing that jumped out as being dangerous or, or, um, it does not work. Everything's in, you know, the bank uses it today, you know, in all these facets. It's a, it's a working building. And back to, if you were to ask me what a thirty thousand dollar poured in place concrete structure building would cost, it's, you know, three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars square foot. So you're well over ten million dollars to sell new. So, uh, those are, those are kind of a brief, uh, run through of, of the building, but, but the bottom line is it is, uh, at the time it was built, it was built very well and it's held up very well. So is there any questions, any things you might?
You mentioned the bathrooms were, uh, may require some work to become ADA compatible. How about the elevators? Is that large enough to accommodate wheelchairs?
The elevator is currently compatible. It's inspected every year by the Department of Labor. It had the current, uh, tags on it. Uh, so that it is, it has been, uh, it's been inspected.
Thank, thank you.
Do you have any question?
No.
Go right ahead. The thirty thousand square feet, is that only the first and second floor? That does not include the basement? It does or doesn't?
It does. That does include the basement. Yes.
Okay. So twenty thousand then on the first two floors?
On the first two floors.
Okay.
The basement is usable space. I mean, it's, um, it's in good condition. There is a vault. It is a two-story vault. It goes from the basement to the, to the first floor. Um, that, you know, is going to be in your way. You're not going to want to, you're not going to want to, it's not worth the effort to tear that thing out. So, um, they use it for storage in the basement and then it's an actual, uh, paint vault on that first floor.
Built-in storm shelter, maybe?
Absolutely.
We don't have any money.
Right? Would you say it's worth the value, uh, that we're talking about in terms of the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is a very good price for something to, uh, I mean, for that building, so long as you have a use for it. I mean, it's back to that. It, uh, wouldn't be a good price for me because I wouldn't have any idea what, if you have a use for it, I would say yes.
That's good.
It's about eight dollars and sixty three cents.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. My question was, do you have a estimated, uh, as far as the occupancy, uh, how many individuals could be in there?
Good question. I do not. I, I don't, it, I think it depends once again on use. If you were to put cubicles in it and use it for a, uh, call center, I would tell you, you could get quite a few people in it. But if you're gonna, uh, you know, it's really, it's really how you want to occupy it. But it can be opened up a lot.
Gentleman has his name.
In the past, in the past, we've had as many as sixty employees in that building comfortably. And the, and the basement is, is fully used.
It would depend on the ultimate end use that would dictate what we needed to do with the restrooms. Isn't that right, Don?
Exactly. I mean, you may, you, you know, the first floor may be the only place where you felt like you needed to do something different with the restrooms, if you're not going to use the other floors. So that's why in, in the number I gave, I did it per restroom, did you just kind of a ballpark number based on what you would do per restroom. Because, yes, you would not need to, only in the areas that you think you would want to, um, uh, be occupying and using a space, would you want to do anything differently? And then back to how many people you have in it to require, you know, how many bathrooms.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, just to give you a, a, a rough idea too, I, I think what Don's telling you, and he can tell you himself here just a second. The main thing is the roof. Um, I think that'd be probably within a couple of years or something. And then based on use after that.
I mean, it leaks today. You can continue to patch it. It does leak today. You, you can continue to patch it. It'll keep going, but, uh, the roof is something I would tell you, um, has to be done at, at some point in the near future. It's, you know, building's always as good as a roof. When the roof's leaking, you're getting, you're getting problems everywhere else and slowly deteriorating, whatever it's leaking. Yes.
Okay. Good.
Gerald, I would, I'll tell you that, um, he, he talked about asbestos. If, if we want to continue down this road, we need to get somebody to come in and do it and asbestos survey and see what we really have. I've worked for people before that, uh, didn't think it was a big deal. And all of a sudden after the asbestos guy left, you know, the deal didn't look very sweet at all. So, um,
I, I, I will certainly do that, um, to help us, uh, ultimately make a decision on what we want to do and start working on getting somebody engaged later this week. Um, I just, um, uh, you, you, you heard a condition report. I just wanted to talk, uh, briefly about potential uses for the building. The number one use that I see is, I know I've got at least two commissioners or more that have been for several years talking about youth activities. Commissioner Waddell? Commissioner Waddell?
Yes.
Would you like to jump in?
Very much so. We've, for, most of you know that I've been looking for, for, for years now at trying to develop and invest in our youth programs. And we've got some programs that out there, that are out there right now, that are operating, operating out of gyms and areas that just aren't optimal for youth development, for, you know, team building exercises, for counseling and things of that nature. And so this is a perfect opportunity. There's an organization, one in particular, that would be perfect for what it is that we're talking about. They just happened to get a grant of $125,000 here recently that still hasn't been spent. And so what works out for us is, is that we potentially have a tenant that can give us some front end money in order to be able to help renovate some of these areas that we're talking about, that we don't, we don't have to find the money right away in order to be able to do that. We've got some front end money, so that 250,000 now becomes 125,000 front end costs in order for us to be able to get into this building. And what I'd say is, is that even if, even if that money wasn't there, we've done multiple, you know, different organizations have done community assessments and about community needs and what the community is looking for. And in this time of COVID, where you're looking at all different types of organizations and children who aren't able to go to school, homeschool is a huge issue right now because so many are, have transitioned to that because of the COVID thing. A space where children could go, you know, with some degree of supervision in order to be able to take care of their homework, have some programs and things and activities available for them during the day. This is one of those things, this is an easy win for us as a city in order to be able to invest into our community, in order to be able to have something for them that they need. And so this is, this is, this is low hanging fruit for us, guys, I think this is an easy win for us.
So I knew that's what you were thinking, Jonathan, on that deal. Would, would, would we require a gymnasium inside of that?
Not at all. One of the best parts about Making a Difference is one, is the organization that, that, that we're looking at. And they were already trying to work hand in hand with the YMCA, and there's, the YMCA has been offering some of their, their resources and their, their gym. So what, what Making a Difference does, doesn't require a gym. But when they do need gym activities, they partner with other organizations that have a gym. And so this, for what they do, it does with, you know, soft skill training, it deals with, you know, talking, you know, how to dress for an interview, all of these skills that we know that our young people need to learn but aren't necessarily taught in school. And so it's an opportunity for them to teach those things in a small group session as, and not in a gym where the ball is dribbling and no one can hear what's going on.
Do you think that they would need all of that facility?
Not at all. I, I think they're looking at somewhere around 10,000 square feet. And the beautiful part about that organization is this, it's a youth organization and a counseling organization. And so what they would use is half of that 10,000 square feet, roughly half, for counseling and the other half for, for, for small groups. And the way that building is set up, as you know, there's a lot of conference rooms and, and big rooms and small offices and things like that. And so you have the ability to multi, multi-use for those rooms to where you could use it for counseling and you could use it for small group sessions. And so honestly, it's built specifically the way in which you would need it in order to be able to accomplish the goal that Making a Difference sets out. Currently, right now, Making a Difference has, they, on a daily basis, they have about 50 kids. They've had as many as 75 at a time. And if you can imagine having 75 kids in one gym at any, at any given time, there's no real learning that can, you know, functionally take place. But in that building, it would be perfect.
So what I'm hearing is that we could use it as a dual use, there could be other entities?
Definitely. I've, I've heard about the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, so all needing space. We've got enough room inside that building, enough office space inside that building to where we could, we could have multiple organizations exist inside that building and, and sign out, okay, we need this conference room during this time in order to be able to have our session. This can truly be a community center where people throughout the community, if they need space, they have space, and they can just sign up in order to be able to use the space.
Thank you. There is also the possibility of potentially, maybe some other city functions could go down there or slices of city functions. We haven't clearly put a lot of thought and brainstorming into that yet at this point. But that is a possibility, we just know that, as Commissioner Waddell said, that would be one good purpose.
Well, and if you, if you haven't been in the basement in that building, there's some, there's some really good office space down there too. There's a big open area to where you could do large group type things down there. The only downside is, is that it's right in the area where the spiral staircase is. So anything that's going on in the first floor is going to hear what's going on in the bottom floor. But that space is available. And as a community center, you would still be able to do things on the weekend that wouldn't, wouldn't hurt, you know, business and operating hours for like city business in that space if you decided to do so. So there's a whole lot of potential for this building in the space that's available.
And that made me think of one more thing that Doug, you might want to elaborate on. I believe it's, you guys have it set up now so that you can offer that kind of access to like United Way? That when the bank is closed, do you want to talk a little bit about how you have that set up? And then, and then we'll answer any other questions, and then we're really done with that item.
Back to history, in 1965, when this building was built, it was designed to have tenants in the upstairs. Dillingham Insurance was a tenant originally before they built their building up on Willow. And Tom Rogers, the architect of the building, office up there. So the way it's designed, it has a front door, back door with, with double doors. And those are keyed separately, so someone can enter the ground level and have access upstairs without having access to the ground level or the basement. And the elevator is also set to work that way. So you throw a switch on the elevator, you can go from the entry up, but you can't go down. So it is designed to have that upstairs feature. And also, the other thing I would mention is, it is, it is a working and operating bank building. So there is drive up lanes, there's teller equipment, you know, for cash handling, the vaults. You know, so there's, as Jonathan said, quite a few options.
Dan Chidell was just texting me that United Way would also be willing to help schedule functions and take on that part of it if need be.
That's phenomenal, already got community buy-in.
There you go.
Well, that's really what we had for you tonight, to consider an introductory, introduction to the possibility of the opportunity. The takeaways that I had tonight are to get an asbestos report done, so we'll start working on that. We'll also do a little brainstorming on other possibilities of city functions. And what I'm gathering is that you may want to pursue this further, so we'll bring that back to you at a future time.
Yep.
Good. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
All right, that's the only item that we had on the study session, so we're going to adjourn and meet back here at 6:30.